Mayor Ray Gordon.
Here.
Council Weber.
Here.
Council Mo.
Here.
Council Rodley.
Here.
Council Blackwell.
Here.
Council Doyle.
Here.
And Council Stowe.
Here. Thank you.
All right, we have two more session items this evening. The first one is the wastewater and stormwater user fees fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
And Jeff's here too. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Matt Stover, Cities and Environmental Services Director. This is Vasco, who you all know. Pleased to be here for our annual presentation on wastewater user fees. So I want to acknowledge that there was a lot of work that went into this presentation. This just kind of scratches the surface. After several years of presenting, I figured out why this presentation bugs me a little bit is because we put this together and then we threw over the budget to you in like three weeks, but this is really a lot of this work is that was done for this presentation that informs the budget. So you'll get that budget piece coming up and we can answer any questions you have on the budget. But tonight we're here to talk rates. And I want to acknowledge Loua Loco and a few others, Kevin Benner and others that put this presentation together and put these rates together for us. Okay, there we go. A little delayed. All right, presentation outline tonight. Going to talk to you about revenue goals, a little bit about the systems. This is going to be reviewed for many of you. Kind of pull through this and get to the rates, but we're going to ultimately end up with the rate options for you. And highlight, there's a nice picture of the mill race there, the mill rate project, just a few blocks away. Okay, the revenue goals that we have for the city are listed here for our user fees. I would note that the user fees are the primary funding source that we have for the city's work on our stormwater and wastewater systems, especially for they are the primary source for our operations and they're a big source of our funds for capital projects. About eighty-five to ninety-five percent, depending on the year and how much STCs we collect, about eighty-five to ninety-five percent of our revenues are used to fund our capital program and then a hundred percent for maintenance, as mentioned. We want to provide some, we want to provide those resources for our own programs on that capital program, maintain our debt service requirements. Maintain, we weren't looking to accumulate. Right now we're looking to maintain our capital reserves and then preserve our fiscal health. We show this slide each year. I think it's important to keep it, just to give Council some context for how large these systems are, how big the assets are. You can see the numbers there. I was joking about going to Jerry's and buying a ten-foot section of eight-inch pipe. Bringing it in here and then you do that times five hundred and twenty, which is equal to a mile for, you know, the math, and then times a two hundred and fifty miles of sewer, that's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand sections of ten-foot pipe that we have, not to mention the utility access holes and everything else that goes along with the systems. So big systems worth a lot of money and it costs a lot to maintain.
Is that through Eugene and Springfield?
It's just Springfield, okay. Yeah, it's hard to visualize how big these are, but they're, they're, they're large. And they're also a priority to our, to our public. Other waterway that we're concerned, folks value recreation, often leave. And then economic development is dependent on, is on equipment or maintenance services. We just went to a Oregon Water Caucus at the state Capitol a couple of weeks back and they highlighted how fifty percent of Oregon's economy is directly related to water and wastewater infrastructure. Okay, a lot of challenges with paying for clean water. We have increasing, operating costs are increasing, their infrastructure is aging. We have a lot of our system that's greater than fifty years old or older. We have the typical on place area pressure and we have permits that I'll talk about briefly, those capital needs and then I note reduced federal funding, that's, I take that off. It's been reduced for some time. There used to be a lot more partnership at the federal level and participating in some of these projects. On the stormwater wastewater side, at least, we've seen that diminish, maybe not as much on transportation, but definitely on our utility side. Something on our permits, our stormwater permit is hard to leave, but it's basically, it's, it's run its course of five, of five years. It's on extension right now, but DEQ are working on renewing it for all phase twos. There are two communities, which Springfield is one. We expect that we're going to see that renewal sometime this fiscal year. It's not up to us renew it, it's up to DEQ to renew it. So we're on that schedule. We think it's going to be within a year or so. Our wastewater permit, we're in the middle of that. That's issued to MWMC Springfield, Eugene, and it's going to be up for renewal in twenty-seven. That really drives the program, programmatic requirements for our wastewater system, particularly at the treatment plant, but also in the local collection system. So for example, one of the provisions in that permit is we're not allowed to have any sanitary septic flows, not even a gallon. They happen occasionally, occasionally, but they're prohibitive and permanent. So really a drive, the drivers for our programs. High level, just the, one, the, some of the programs that are funded with user fees, we have any sort of operation and maintenance programs, education and outreach, capital work, discharge, people, you know, dumping things down the drain that they shouldn't be doing and follow up on that. A lot of our development review is, is some of it is of the engineering work associated with that is funded with these fees. As a, as is our wastewater treatment all through MWMC and I know master planning, facilities planning and customer billing is also funded. So the fees touch a lot of the work that the city does on a daily basis. Well, let Jeff take the next slide.
Well, so yeah, thank you, Matt. So this next, as we get closer to kind of talking about the actual fee increase, this is kind of a little bit of a refresher on what the council saw and adopted last year, which was the wastewater master plan update. You heard as we looked at that, we've used revenue bonds in the past to pay for unexpected, in a way mandated replacement, repair pipes. And so one of the things, one of the goals when we looked at our strategic financial plan as part of the wastewater master plan was making sure that not only are we prepared if we need to take out future revenue bonds, so maintain in our credit rating, but also so that we can maintain that even rate increase. I don't think anybody really remembers or was on the council and we, I was here when we did sell those bonds, but we had to do a rate increase of fourteen and twelve percent back to back to get our credit rating and get ourselves prepared to sell those bonds. And that was something that came down mandated from the EPA on those replacements. So you didn't really have a choice. So that's kind of key as far as when we look at setting rates. One of the other things we talked about was, you know, part of our capacity management, operations and maintenance program is maintaining and preserving, Matt touched on that, the amount of assets that we have in the ground out there. It's really critical that we maintain those. As a reminder, one thing that was identified in the wastewater master plan, there's a hundred and thirty miles of pipe still out there that is concrete older than nineteen eighty. So basically it's concrete pipe that has reached the end of its useful life. And so we're planning to basically go through the system and schedule and these rates are setting us up to be able to systematically go through and replace that pipe. Customer usage, so rates, our system expansion, I could cover that. So also we're planning if, as we expand in the UGB to make sure that we have the adequate, adequate resources to provide for that growth. And one thing I will touch on as a reminder as well, that we did look at all of the middle housing rules, so we, we factored that into the master plan update. So those expansion and where we might need to do annual expansion or increase size is already factored in. Customer usage is, goes both ways, it kind of dovetails with water conservation. Our rates are factored on the usage. And so if there's a high usage, the rate goes up, which increases revenue, but that also means more flow at the plant that they have to treat. On the other side, when we conserve water, that means people are paying less, but our costs don't necessarily reflect that. It usually costs about the same, maybe a little more. And we're also always seeing increasing costs with inflation. And so that kind of covers it. And that's what the customer usage, that, that rates are kind of flow-based.
Glad to show Council the rate comparisons where Springfield sits for wastewater and stormwater compared to some of the other agencies. And this shows that for wastewater, it's a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison. The blue bar represents MWMC and that component is the regional treatment component. That's the same between Eugene and Springfield. That's one of the, it's a primary component for the cost of delivering wastewater services. The green, in each Eugene Springfield represents the local components. And the typical questions that come up here is why is Eugene's local component less than Springfield? And some of that has to do with the, the bonds that we had to go out and sell and how we had taken on that additional debt and we didn't have as large of a customer base to spread those costs out over, as Eugene did. There's other factors. And I would also note that the permit drivers are different for Springfield. The MWMC's permit with Eugene Springfield, those permit drivers are a bit different than other communities like Kerbalans or Albany or Portland, for example. So this is where we were as of February first of this year. Before, and this is typically, this is assuming five thousand gallons of wastewater treated, average home, average, average user home in Springfield uses forty-two hundred gallons. So they see a little bit lower than that fifty-nine dollars, maybe around fifty dollars a month for wastewater services. Okay. Stormwater side. Nope, looks like our graph got cut off there. I guess you can see Springfield is one, two, three, four, fifth from the left. And it's, it's sandwiched between Albany and Beaverton, about sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents a month. The average is, is thirteen and what I note here is that a couple of things. One, Springfield has the, the good fortune, the poor fortune, whatever you choose, however you use to look at it, of being one of the first actual phase two community that was issued a permit from DEQ. We're sandwiched between two rivers. And there's a lot of, we have a mature program and it costs money to deliver those programmatic requirements that it takes to meet our permits. And so that therefore by having a program in place for quite a bit longer than other communities, we have the requirements in our permits. But others are catching up. Albany actually didn't even have a permit under the phase two program, believe it or not. I'm not sure how they eat pies is another story, but until just a few years ago, they had to implement a program, a stormwater fee here recently, and you can see it's just a little higher than ours. But again, this is a bit apples to oranges, but it gives a good approximation of where Springfield sits. I would note for many years we were higher than Eugene and we've used the council's philosophy of small incremental rate adjustments over time to kind of moderate our rate increases. And then Jeff is going to talk through a few options with you.
Yeah, so first option presented shows that, that four percent proposed on the wastewater, the three percent on the stormwater. One thing I'll note, the stormwater rate between option one and option two is the same. One of the things with that is we have, we don't, we haven't gone through a strategic financial plan. So we haven't looked out that twenty years. What are our needs are? What are our needs for revenue? We're going to start that with the new permit coming in, looking at what those needs are. So while we could probably sit here and say maybe three percent isn't quite enough to meet all of those future needs of the growth of the system and adequately maintain it, it's not comfortable presenting to you what that, what that information would be without kind of going through all of the factors in the stormwater program. So we'll be doing that work ahead of next year's budget. Again, the wastewater proposal is based, is just four percent, just an option presented to council. What that would mean versus the five percent option two, and you just got, is, is that we would most likely have to just extend some future projects. The five percent is something that we brought to council last year. It's based on the strategic financial plan that we went through on the wastewater system, as I talked about earlier. It factors in all of that needed future growth and all of that rehab work that we need to do as well as a strategic spend down of the reserves we had to get to a, an ideal reserve as well as revenue, new revenue coming in. So again, that's why the five percent is recommended is based on the strategic financial plan presented from last year.
Yeah, I like numbers. I just did, I ran some numbers and I mentioned this at our commission meeting. Over the last ten years, we've seen an average of about two point seven four percent on the stormwater side for an adjustment and then two point four five on wastewater. CPI over the same time has been around two point eight six, so a little higher. So we're kind of right in that, we're right in line with where we should be. This year's, this year we're both in the five and the three, the three, the three in the outer regions will probably increase for stormwater if we do that financial look. But it's right where we kind of need to be and right where we are, given the economy and what's going on out there with the cost of projects and the cost of maintaining infrastructure and the cost of materials and services. So the two options side by side, very, apologies for the formatting got there, but I think you can get the, get the gist of looking at those two options side by side.
Yeah, so one of the goals when we look at this, this thinking strategically, as I said, is, is looking at it, at the work we need to do and trying to make this incremental because nobody likes fee increases. I know that. But we also don't like drastic fee increases. So the key is to balance the work we know we need to get done within the system, all of the requirements we have, and try and moderate those increases and keep them as low as possible. And so that's, that's what is proposed. And again, that's why we want to do those big, long looks to say, what does our permit tell us we need to do? What are our assets? What is the condition of our assets? So that we can make sure we don't have to deal with costly emergency repairs. We don't want to have to sell bonds, but if we do sell bonds, we prefer to do it for big expansion projects, those large capital projects where we know we're getting new revenue or new users coming in versus having to do capital for maintenance or preservation or sell bonds for capital preservation or maintenance. We'd rather try and make sure that we can manage that with the user fees on hand.
All right, questions? Or do you want to finish first, Matt?
One more, one more slide. Okay, last slide.
So excited about the rates.
This is, I give you the rate forecast for MWMC, the commission we held public hearing here on, this last Friday, so just a few days ago, and that was preceded by a budget meeting with the, to talk about capital budget, entire budget in March. And the commission recommended advancing a five percent adjustment on the regional side of the wastewater fees based on a number of factors. I don't need to get into those, but the same thing we've kind of been talking about, just the increase in, in cost of utilities, cost of materials and services, cost of meeting permit obligations, those sorts of things. There's a whole host of things, but they do recommend a five percent on the regional side. And so that's all to say that depending on your direction tonight, we will be back before you on May fifth for a public hearing to present whatever it is that you're recommending, you're recommending for us to implement.
All right, Council Rodley.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I appreciate it. It's always very easy to understand and explains all the things. And I kind of feel messily about it and I'll tell you why. I thi, I think that if, I'm definitely leaning towards the first option. And even that, I think, yes, I completely support the incremental increases. We don't want big increases for folks. But we're living in a time when even that, that first one is going to be felt by people, I think, because we're, this isn't the only rate increase, right? Everything is going up and people are feeling very scared and precarious and don't, you know, or we're just not, it's just the way the economy is. So I want to be as sensitive as possible about that and know that we still need to like do what we do and maintain the services and think about that. Five percent just feels big for your average person that I see talking about utilities. And I understand it. So I just wanted to just put that out there, this, so that people could hear that at least, you know, that I am, I am concerned about how that's going to be felt by people in this particular year. And I know that there's philosophies around, we do smaller increases and then when the economy's better, we do bigger increases, but we don't, I mean, it's been a mess, like ever since I've been a part of council and the budget committee and stuff, it's been, we never know what's happening. So I'm leaning to, I'm definitely leaning towards option one and just want us to be sensitive about it.
Okay, Council Weber.
I think sensitivity is definitely important and rates are going to go up everywhere in everything that we're dealing with in life right now. But I'm, I'm comfortable going with option number two as recommended. Just, I think it helps us kind of stay on a little bit better pace for future. And it's a twenty-five cent difference. To me, that's not, I mean, it can, it can add up depending on how much use there is, but I don't, for twenty-five cents, I think I'm okay with number two.
Council Stowe. So as the council liaison to, for the MWMC, being on the board, I just want to express my incredible gratitude for the work they do do and also highlight the incredible fiscal conservatism that their whole, that the whole organization has. You won't find a group of people quite as passionate about saving money for the rate payer as is on the MWMC board. So I think we, we have a lot to be grateful for, for the work that the board is doing there to ask the hard questions, to make sure we're not paying and dying more than we absolutely have to. It, I am frustrated about the whole situation of rate increases. Absolutely feel that. And it does scare me a little bit that we are increasing so many different things, utilities, et cetera. That said, my only other, I, I am leaning towards option number two and the reason is I was, I was, I received one barb in session, which was that we are accountable for every gallon of water that comes down the river downstream from the MWMC. And I do believe that there, they will be just stewards of the rate increase to make sure that we absolutely are on that without, I don't think we're going to see, we're not going to see any negative press of excessive expenditures on their, on their part. It would just, it just doesn't, it doesn't exist there. So I actually support the five percent increase and, and I think that will help them stay ahead of things. In addition, their finance people, especially I want to highlight Loua Loco's work. He, it's incredible how well they can change with, on a dime, what the rate model looks like and what their proposed rate model is. So if we were to hit an even deeper recession, we can quickly and easily adjust those rates to take care of our people even better. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Council Rodley.
So I believe that one of the most important responsibilities that we have as local government is caring for and making sure that the infrastructure that we have is provided to the community. And I think that it's the number one thing. And it's unfortunate that we don't have people that come into our meetings holding up signs saying, yay wastewater. So, you know, but we don't. And it's because people just expect that their toilet's going to flush when they, you know, push the button. They don't think about all of that pipe and those old, old pipes. And the idea that if we do have something fail, it is a significant, now you're not just talking about the pipe, you're talking about the street, you're talking about millions of dollars. And so for me, making sure that we have that up kept as best we can. And I, I too agree that our staff with MWMC and that you guys do a good job and you're good stewards of our money. And I know that you're looking out for making sure that that infrastructure is well cared for. So I'm okay with your recommendation of option two as well.
I am as well. I am good with option two after looking at all the information that was provided. Thank you. I, my concern would be with option one is that we're playing catch-up at a future year, that we're not keeping pace with what we need to to do in order to maintain the system. So I'm good with option two.
Option two. All right, so it sounds like option two. A couple of questions. One of the things I like that we've done the last couple of years is switch to show an actual forecast for what those rates are going to be because the, you know, if we are talking about wanting to have small incremental rates, we want to also look for rate stability, right? You know, having one percent the first year doesn't help us if we have ten percent flashed the last couple of years. One thing that I think would help us is historically, and you've kind of come down in the out years, it feels like, and maybe a little bit in the front years, is to simply come back and tell us what, what, what you forecasted the last time and what the new adjusted, you know, adjusted rate is. Because I think that would, I don't think they're changing that much, but you know, it's like a year since we, we see these every single time. So having a little bit more additional information when we do about the public hearing about that, I think would be, would be meaningful. The other thing, and I will just continue to echo this, is we control a lot of fees, we can control a lot of charges. Continuing to work towards rate stability as low as possible, right, is, and take care of our infrastructure is the balance we're all here for. And I do appreciate the work you guys have done with this. All right. Thanks. Thank you. So the next, our next item is the Springfield Fiscal Stability Task Force. And we have Ne. Okay, Amory, Sarah, we got a whole brand new people here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in September and October of twenty twenty-four, staff engaged as council in two work, well, work sessions, looking for guidance on how to address the structural imbalance that we have in the city's general fund. From that came a mayor's task force and a committee charge providing guidance on the purpose of that task force, essentially developing understanding of the city's services and finances and provide recommendations to the city council on options for developing a strategy for sustainable funding for city services. Since that time, the city contracted with two consultants, Funk Levis and ECO Northwest, to assist in the planning of those meetings for facilitation, fiscal analysis, as well as the final report writing. We, the task force met for nine consecutive weeks between mid-January and mid-March. And currently, ECO Northwest is drafting a final report that'll be coming back to you in work sessions scheduled for May nineteenth. So joining us tonight is Anne Marie Levis from Funk Levis and Sarah Emmons from ECO Northwest. And we've got a presentation that's going to include background on why the task force was convened, an overview of the task force, a membership and structure, a summary of the process and work completed, as well as demographic and financial comparisons between Springfield and peer communities in Oregon. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Nancy Noon.
Thank you, Nathan. I'm going to try to navigate with this remote, so everybody, good luck, right? I wanted to kick off this evening with just a little bit of context because this group has been meeting, but I think it's important to talk about the story of how we arrived here because that really sets the stage with some of the information you'll be getting later to this evening. So when I came to the city in April of twenty twenty, not an ideal time to start a new job by any measure. But one of the things that I noticed pretty quickly was that the city runs very, very lean. And I remember making an observation to that, to a city manager colleague. And their response was, well, Nancy, all cities run me. And, you know, I've been working in local government in Oregon for over twenty years. I know Oregon is flush with money. So I was like, well, yes, but this, this feels really lean. This feels really lean, almost like everybody's doing a job and a half or more. And, but of course, you know, I'm not making decisions based on my feelings. I wanted to find out and check, you know, what is really our financial position, and how can we look at that to improve our long-term financial outlook? So really that was kind of the thought of my, my head. And Nathan and I started talking about really being deliberate in highlighting the structural imbalance that exists that you're going to hear about this evening. And really being clear and open with that in the budget process and all of our communications. And we also talked about the five-year general fund forecast, which we really wanted to sharpen our pencils and get as close to real-time information as possible. So we are making real-time decisions. Also, in twenty twenty-four, well, part of twenty twenty-three and moving over to twenty twenty-four, we retained Public State, or excuse me, Portland State University Center for Public Service to conduct an assessment of the city's financial condition. Portland State has done similar studies. They're kind of a local expert on how cities work at the Center for Public Service. And so I just wanted to see, you know, did we miss anything? And having an independent third-party person go in, talk to department directors, ask them questions, and from a kind of purely academic and public policy view, say, are there things that we could do? Could we make additional cuts? Do we add additional resources? Are there legislative changes that we should maybe pursue with the council? Is this an economic development conversation? These were like kind of the four areas that they were looking at as well. So we're going to talk a little bit more about that. Some of the general findings was that the city is financially well managed. That did not come as a surprise to me. I, I have a lot of faith in Nathan and his team and the executive team. And it did also show that we are in fact a very lean city. Our property tax rate is comparable to other cities, but there are a variety of factors why we are lean. And Sarah will talk, talk more about that when she does the deep dive into the data, which I think is really interesting because it tells a story about how we got to where we are today. Bottom line, there was no easy work to be done, right? All of the kind of low hanging fruit, as people like to say, had already been picked, had already been All of the kind of low-hanging fruit, as people like to say, had already been picked, had already been, you know, yielded by uh prior councils, prior staff. So now we get to the hard part. And not that, not that it hasn't been hard, and the city has um done very well, but you know, this is where twenty years in the making has kind of come to a head. So when you look at this, uh, the study, um, really, we were having them focus more on the city's general fund. That is our fund that we have the most ability to be flexible within. And it also funds some of the city's uh core operations, namely our public safety, uh police, fire, also our municipal court and dispatch service. Um, we do have two uh local option levies that support uh the municipal court, uh, the police department to some degree, and um dispatch. And also, um, we have a levy for our uh, to pay part of our fire uh department. However, those levies do not cover the full cost of services. And that is simply a result of when you begin a levy, it's always easier if you're looking to renew a levy to do a straight renewal than to incrementally uh have a a cost increase. And we just talked about that uh in the prior presentation about the importance of making incremental cost um increases when you can. Uh, the challenge, of course, is that it's, it's, it's a difficult sell when you, when it's something that is placed on a valid versus um a public policy board making that decision. Um, within the P S U study, because it was also happening uh coinciding with the um Eugene Springfield Fire um Governance Task Force, that was a kind of excluded from the study and also from the excluded from the task force charge. It's its own process and track and I'm running on a parallel process. So I just wanted to note that. So here's a number that really jumped out at me, ten percent. Um, and that was P S U's analysis of the administrative cost load of the city. That is exceedingly low. And just to give you some context, when I started my career in government, I worked for the Commission on Children and Families, keeping kids out of the juvenile justice system. We administered grants to nonprofits, and our recommendation to nonprofits was to keep their administrative costs um below eighteen percent, eighteen to nineteen percent, to be competitive for grants. And we're, this is ten percent. This is substantially lower than that. So my feeling of, boy, we are really lean was borne out in their analysis. And I also like to be right. So what was next? You know, what, what, what happens next? You know, we have the P S U report, and I, I do think that it was an important process to go to, go through, because you know, it's one thing for us, we work, we work with these numbers every day, we're constantly monitoring our budget. But to have an independent party confirm, you know, are the way our uh we run and to speak to Councilor Stouts, you know, um kind of version of, you know, we are, we are very fiscally conservative, and we have been, and that's been, that's been a a wonderful thing for the city. However, you know, we are in a position where we want, we need to make some difficult decisions. And so I was having conversations with the mayor over a series of months. Um, you know, much like uh mayors have the ability to engage uh special task force and committees, sometimes they're called blue-ribbon committees. You give them a fancy name, sometimes you don't. In this case, we, we were a little bit more plain and just called it a fiscal stability, sustainability task force. And really, um, calling on our community um uh members and that had technical expertise in finance had um demonstrated commitment to the city either through a, either a large employment base or a, a the presence of what they do in our city. Um, to really get their take um with the help of our consultant team. And I want to talk about our consultants really quickly before I hand the presentation over to them. So we really, um, when you're engaging in a discussion this important, you really want to get the, the, the most um talent that you can bring to the table. And in this case, that was Funk Levis and ECO Northwest. Um, Funk Levis specializes in helping government go through uh challenging topics and engaging communities on those topics. That, that is kind of their niche area. They do a lot of other things. Um, we had used Funk Levis uh previously during the ice storm, when we did not have a public information officer in the city. That was, they really came through in the clutch. And so they were already familiar with the city, had a relationship with the mayor. So there was very little learning curve there. Um, ECO Northwest is also um very much an expert in anything um that crosses um economic development and public policy. That's kind of their niche, and they are really known for the tremendous amount of work that they do in that field, highly regarded. I had worked with this firm uh many years ago when I was in county work. So I was familiar with their work and I'd worked um with them. So again, real specialty areas. Um, the takeaway on this was, you know, as staff, we are, we were really committed to having a very transparent process that we didn't put our finger on the scale, that we didn't have a pre-conscribed outcome, that we just wanted, you know, what people would say was, well, you just want a rubber stamp, something that you've already decided. And that was certainly not the case. In our case, it was, you know, I really believed in, in talking with the mayor. You know, my core belief on this process was that we have a ch- community of people that are very dedicated to the city. And if you present them with a challenge and provide them with information, they will step up and they will help and they will, you know, offer some creative ideas. And this is exactly what happened with the task force. So I'm going to hand this over um to probably Emery first. And then we are going to talk about her observations as our facilitator, facilitator of this process, and then also um the data portion. When we get to the data portion, I will say, if it's okay with Sarah, if you have questions, which is, we're gonna be going through a lot of data, so you might have a question in real time, it's okay to ask that question then.
Please do.
So, Emery.
Great. Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, City Councilors. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, really thrilled to be here to talk to you. Uh, we'll have three meeting sessions together tonight is to really talk about the process, go through the data, the deep dive into the data that ECO Northwest did, that, so you can see where the um committee started. Um, for those of you who don't know me, uh, I'm uh president of Funk Levis. Company's been around for forty-five years. No, I wasn't there when it started, uh, but joined after uh the U of O. I've been a planning commissioner. I believe we were planning commissioners together, uh elected official as a school board. I've been on library committees to do fundraising for that. Um, a lot of different things. For me, this work was personal. In fact, I turned it down when I got a call to, to do this. I said, that sounds difficult. And it sounds like um it's gonna be a cumbersome, really tough project. And I said, I don't know. Um, turned it down, and then I called back about a half an hour later, and I said, actually, these are the things that people in this community need to commit to. As elected officials, you make difficult decisions all of the time. Um, but my one saying to both the mayor and the city manager was, nothing was off the table. That this committee was going to operate and discuss and be able to ask any question. And so I want to talk a little bit about that process, because um in all of the work that I've done, this may be one of the things I'm uh the most proud of, for the committee work, for the um questions they were able to ask, and for um frankly, the openness of, of the city, really. Um, Springfield does things their own way, and it's done really well. And, and I'm very appreciative of that. Um, as you're hearing in the news, many cities, many counties, many communities are going through this. Um, a lot of it are going through it uh in different ways. I think what you'll see from this process um was a really thoughtful bringing together a, a good group of people um to really think about this in a, a different way. Um, and I will say that, that this was really led by the committee. Uh, we were facilitators, we had our data, exceptional data. Um, it was led by the committee. The committee um asked the questions, they talked about this. We gave them the process to do it, um, which was pretty intense. Um, but, but it really was the committee going through. And what we're bringing to you is, is that good work. So then it comes for you to make decisions. Um, so when we think about this, and we call it the Mayor's Fiscal Stability Task Force, it really was a technical advisory committee. Um, when you see the people that were on this, they were brought to this committee for their technical expertise, whether it be as community members who had been very involved with a lot of the things with Springfield, whether it was because they were a part of the largest employer in Springfield. Um, people who were very involved, who've been on committees. Um, they had technical expertise that was really exceptional. And they were given a charge of making cuts that were uh to give the city time to really be able to look at some of these um structural imbalances. Um, there were four areas, and they were all equally important. Um, where could we cut costs? Again, the city manager talked about how lean your city is run. Um, where could things be, be cut? What could be done? What were some revenue options? Um, economic development. We, we looked at ways that we could grow out of some of the problems. And then what are ways that we could do things legislatively? Again, everything was on the table. Just wanted to show you a couple of pictures. We were in this room, so I had a little uh twitch when I walked in here tonight, having been here. Um, just to kind of walk everybody through the, the timeline, as you remember, um, city council had a work, work session talking about the five-year budget forecast. Um, we began our work. Uh, we had everyone commit to every single Wednesday evening um from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Um, they worked through, they uh showed up every Wednesday. If they couldn't be here, many of them would either be on Zoom. Um, there was very little of people missing meetings. So now we're here, where we give you the overview and the report to the city council to then move on to um your process. But I always want to make sure people know where we are in the timeline for this. Let's talk a little bit about the, sorry, am I doing that?
No, we're gonna put you on pause. They're gonna try to move one of the, see if we can get the whole slide here.
Oh, good.
So we're, we're pausing for station identification.
All of a sudden, I worried that I was doing something wrong. I have tech phobia that I've done something wrong. So um task force membership, I talked a little bit about this. Um, these were people that were wildly committed to this process. Um, people from um, from UA Local Two-Ninety, the pipe fitters for Union, uh Springfield Chamber of Commerce Construction, um, one of your budget committee members, a community volunteer, Meritay, um CDC management, uh International Paper, Peace Health, community volunteers who have been very involved, and OCCU uh members. Again, as you look at that, peace health as well, I skipped over. Um, what I will tell you is there were several of the people that we asked at first also said no. Um, several people here have never volunteered for a committee, but they believed this was a critical step and a commitment that they were willing to make. Um, at the first meeting, we asked, what is it about Springfield that makes this such a, a wonderful place to be? Um, people talked about business and city are partners in what we do in Springfield. There's a sense of belonging, pragmatism, we get stuff done, sensible leadership. Um, the downtown turnaround was a great partnership. Um, and that there's an enthusiasm for getting things done. So everyone here really committed to that. Let me talk again a little bit about the structure and process. Every Wednesday night for nine weeks, we went into everything, city finances, current services, all of the data. Um, I can't even think, Nathan, how many questions were asked. I mean, every week, we probably had five, five to ten questions, deep questions. In fact, the mayor who wasn't there very much, he showed up to one, he said, there's questions that we've never heard in budget committee, um, that people are asking. So it was really wonderful. And staff did a phenomenal job of, they would answer questions, but they were not there to direct. It was not like a budget committee where staff presents. It very much was, here's the data, here's the information. Now tell us um what questions you have. Um, they discussed and debated possible options. And I, I just want to take a moment and tell you something I saw. It might get a little choked up, I don't mean to. I watched people walk in that room at the beginning, and they had their mind made up. And they said, we're not doing this, we're doing this, we're not doing that. And I listened to people talk from their heart and say, but we can't do this. This really matters to this community. And people who said, I absolutely want to get rid of soda machines, whatever, I'm just gonna give you an example, changed their mind. You don't hear that a lot in committees. This committee sat, they listened to each other, they changed their mind. That's something for a, a process that you come into, because you often have your pet project, that you say it has to be this. So, so it was a really phenomenal group of people, and you'll hopefully get to meet some of them. Um, at the end, they came to consensus. Uh, I will tell you, it was lively discussions. Uh, there were back and forth, there were um things that came up and then things that got taken off, but they came to consensus. So you'll see that at our next meeting. I want to turn it over to Sarah. Again, we said, uh, we wanted you to see the data of the benchmarking for cities. Um, so you can understand a bit about what, how we looked at the data. We want to make sure you have uh the ability to ask any questions. I'm dying to hold that baby, so it's killing me. You know that when I'm in a room with a puppy or a baby, it's all I can think about. Um, so I want to turn it over to Sarah to be able to go through the data, and then we'll have time for additional questions at the end.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Um, hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Emmons. I'm a consultant. I work with ECO Northwest. Um, I have a background in state and local uh public finance. Um, I was formerly the, the Deputy CFO at the Department of Children and Families in Washington State, where I live. I live in Olympia, so I drove down today. Um, and I worked in the Washington State Legislature for Ways and Means and House Finance. And with ECO Northwest and um in other capacities, I've done a lot of work on taxes and local budgets. Um, so it was a, it's been a really fascinating project. And like Anne Marie said, a lot of cities are going through similar um struggles that Springfield is, um, which is uh definitely um makes my book of business probably more desirable right now. But it was, um, Springfield is a very uh um unique city in the, in the uh hands-on approach to, to um kind of tackling some of these challenges. So um, we're gonna talk today, I, I call this a comparable cities analysis, maybe, maybe not benchmarking, although that's, that is what we're doing. Um, but benchmarking kind of implies that there's a right or wrong level of taxation or spending. And of course, as you know, as elected officials, no cities are exactly the same. There are many differences in terms of institutional arrangements and service delivery um and communities that we want to make sure we really understand. And the task force was, um, I guess they, they had a deep dive into city finances, and they were starting to ask a lot more questions about, you know, how does Springfield's budget compare to other cities in Oregon? Um, especially in terms of some of the budget pressures that, that uh Springfield is facing. And so this kind of analysis can be really helpful to make sure that um they and you are, are kind of grounded in how uh your city stacks up and compares. Um, and a lot of what I'll say today, probably you already know, uh, but now you'll have the, the kind of data to, to back it up. So this is the order of the um, my presentation and the indicators that we'll look at. The cities were, um, that we're gonna look at were selected based uh based primarily on geography. So we were looking for similar-sized cities um and that, that are, you know, relatively close to Springfield, that are not necessarily in the Portland metro region, so sort of standalone cities, so the economy is similar. Uh, we wanted to have a good variation in county, because we felt that would be more um useful to kind of understand the, the differences in structure there. We're gonna spend a little bit of time looking at community and economic characteristics, relying primarily on census data. And then that will really help you hopefully understand more about how, what your tax base, um, your residential tax base looks like, uh, who lives and works in, in Springfield, as well as the service, service demands. And then we'll spend some time looking at uh fiscal characteristics, uh, but the, but And then we'll spend some time looking at fiscal characteristics, the but the budget size and budget structure, and the responsibilities that Springfield has. And as the city manager mentioned, please do interrupt if you have questions as we go. So these are the cities that we selected for for this analysis. We're looking at Eugene, Medford, Springfield, Corvallis, Albany, and Redmond. So most of the cities are, again, along the I-5 corridor, tend to be relatively large cities. I think all of them are in the top 20 in terms of population in the state of Oregon. Eugene, of course, is is much larger than these cities, but you can't really talk about Springfield's operations without talking about Eugene's operations as well, since it's your neighbor. And then Redmond is a little bit smaller, but has maybe a similar service profile and then does a not not so much a comp, just in terms of a lot of the changes its economy has gone through in recent years. We felt Redmond was maybe a closer peer. And this chart is intended to kind of show you the the operational structures and responsibilities that each of these cities have. So we really did focus on the operating budget, not so much on capital. And these are the, what I would call the responsibility areas or the service areas that each of these cities offers. So Springfield is an outlier in a couple of ways. Of course, it's the only city in this list that does operate a jail, so the other cities don't have jails, and that does, of course, have an implication for public safety, operating costs. And it's the only city in our list that does not have a municipal parks department. And as you know, that doesn't mean that Springfield is not served by parks, though Lam Lane Parks District provides excellent excellent service in this area, but we're just focusing on the responsibilities that the city of Springfield provides.
It's the asterisks on the West one, or, I'm sorry?
The asterisks on the West one.
Oh, I, I, that would refer to, I think, some of what the previous presentation was about, that that Springfield's budget has the the NWMC budget as well. So we did do a little bit of scrubbing to try to make sure we were only looking at the portion of of Springfield's budget that serves Springfield residents. So we had to do a little bit of numbers crunching.
All of the NWMC flows through, even Eugene's budget flows through our budget. So we removed that, but we left Springfield's portion of NWMC, so we can still have relatively apples-to-apples numbers.
My L's heightened earlier, whether it was Eugene or not.
Thank you. Yeah, and the on an apples-to-apples note, I should have said this earlier, another kind of tricky aspect of doing studies like this is just the fact that the data are so different. So we did the best we could with the fiscal portion, but there would, there will still, no two cities are exactly the same. So now we're gonna move into the community characteristics. So Springfield is is the ninth biggest city in Oregon. It's third in terms of size in 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 our comparable cities list. On the left, you can see population, and on the right, you see the number of households. And Eugene, again, obviously, much, much, much larger. And one thing that I'll note is the average household size in Eugene is 2.5, which is a little bit above the state average and and a little bit on the bigger end of the cities in our group. I think of Springfield as a as a family town. We have a little guest in in here that's maybe verifying that. But again, this is where, you know, I'll try to point out aspects of Springfield's community that you probably already know, but that we're seeing in the data. In terms of race and ethnicity, the cities are listed here in alphabetical order, and the state of Oregon is shown there at the bottom. The cities are fairly similar in terms of their racial and ethnic distribution. And one aspect that I'll note is that the the share of Springfield residents who are white alone is a little bit lower in all of these cities than in the state of Oregon as a whole. So when we talk about household income and poverty, and now we're moving into community characteristics that might tell you a little bit more about sort of the city's residential tax base. Springfield and most of the sample cities are below the state median in terms of their household incomes. So that's the chart on the left, Springfield's orange in all of these graphs, and the state of Oregon is green. And then the the inverse, you know, Springfield is above the state poverty rate, poverty rate, excuse me, and the the order goes in third, third lowest in terms of income and third highest in terms of poverty rate. I'll note here that Eugene and Corvallis, both being university towns, they do have large student populations, and they would be included in census data. They they're likely skewing the data a little bit lower in terms of income or higher in terms of poverty rate, but they're the best available data that we have to look at these cities in comparison to each other. And employment, in terms of employment and higher ed, so Springfield Springfield's employment rate is above the state, so I I think of Springfield also as a as a working town. It's second highest among the sample and significantly higher than the state. But in terms of higher educational attainment rates, at least in terms of looking at four-year degrees, this the city is lower than the state and lowest among the sample of cities that we looked at. And you can think of this, you know, it tends to go hand in hand maybe with the income being a little bit at the lower end of the cities that we looked at. People work in Springfield, but they may not be working in jobs that necessarily require a four-year degree, which sometimes can be can be correlated with lower incomes. We looked also at housing. So Springfield's housing does tend to be less expensive than the other cities that we that we looked at, and less expensive than than the state of Oregon. On the left, we're showing median home values. So in Springfield, the median home value is lower than the state and lowest among all of the samples. This is census data, so these numbers, and it's 2023, the numbers might look a little lower than what you would maybe be expecting to see, just given that census data do lag just a little bit. They're actually published in 2023, but they're probably from a year or two before. But I would expect that the ordinal ranking would be the same in today's dollars, or excuse me, in today's prices. And also that assessed value, I would note, goes in this kind of rough ordinal ranking as well. And we'll spend a little bit of time talking about that at the end of the presentation, and its implications for taxes here in Springfield. And the same order, you can see the rent on the right is also in the same order. And I'll note just that I didn't say that housing is more affordable in Springfield, just because we did talk about how incomes are a little bit lower here. So we think of it as less expensive, but not necessarily less, more affordable. We also looked at age. So compared to the state, Springfield has a slightly higher share of the population who are children. So again, this maybe goes hand in hand with the household size data point that I talked about earlier. So that's the chart on the left shows the population that's under the age of 18, and Eugene and Corvallis are skewed down probably by the college students. And then on the right, you you can see that Springfield has a lower share of the population who are of retirement age, and I think this goes hand in hand again with that, the employment rate being higher in Springfield than in some of the other cities that we we looked Any questions so far? And then our final slide on community characteristics. We did one, we did want to take a closer look at at some indicator in the public service, or excuse me, public safety arena, since that is an area that we knew would be of interest to the task force. The chart on the left shows property crime per thousand residents. So Springfield is just a little above the state in that that data point, lower in 2023 and 20, than 2022. And on the right, you can see it, the violent crime corollary, this is violent crimes per thousand residents, and these are from the FBI Uniform Crime Lab, just to kind of give you a sense of where Springfield falls in terms of of crime rates, which would be an indicator both the public safety service and public safety demand. So that was kind of our, you know, the the task force had just done a real deep dive into finances, and that was our contextual scene setting for a kind of higher-level view of their their budget data in the context of these other cities. So these are the questions that were asked and answered in in this presentation. So how, we looked at budget size and structure, and how does the budget compare to other cities? Is it is its structure similar? Does it have more, fewer, different responsibilities than other cities? We're, we are gonna look at expenditures and FTE in a number of areas, and then we'll take a closer look at the general fund in terms of both FTE and tax burden, and then what others, other revenue sources cities tend to utilize to pay for operations. So for this presentation, we used fiscal year 25 adopted budget numbers for all of the cities. And then there are a couple of cities that had biennial budgets, we had to annualize their their budgets just to look at at fiscal year 25. So these are the total budgets, the the like lighter shade is the total budget. Springfield's is, gosh, I can't even read that, I'm realizing how small the fund is. Hundred and eight, 118 million total fund budget, and $46 million general fund budget is the dark colored bar. So Springfield's general fund budget is the smallest of all the cities, but in terms of total fund, but budget, it's the second largest, or excuse me, second smallest of all the cities. That's behind only Redmond, which is, of course, much, much, much smaller. So for this analysis, again, we we focusing on operating budget, we excluded debt service, transfers, which kind of make the budget picture confusing, and we excluded capital expenditures as well. So in term, on a per capita basis, Springfield's total expenditures were the second lowest in the sample, ahead of of Medford. And it's general fund, your your general fund expenditures on a per capita basis are the lowest. That's the the chart on the right. And we'll talk about what we think is behind that in a minute. We also want to talk about budgets as, not just as a, on a per capita basis, but also as a share of aggregate income. And this is sometimes an indicator that's sometimes called the price of government. It's it's sort of an indicator that can tell you how much, how much a community's tax base is bearing in terms of your overall size of government. This doesn't mean, so Springfield's expenditures as a share of household income are 6.3%. This doesn't mean, of course, that Springfield residents pay 6.3% of their income toward city government. It's just sometimes used as a helpful kind of indicator when looking across cities or at a city over time to to kind of benchmark. So in terms of expenditures as a share of income, Springfield's is second lowest, and that's, I'll point out, even though Springfield's income is at the lower end of these cities, its expenditures as a share of income are also at the lower end. And general fund expenditures as a share of household income are very low at the at the lowest end of all of of the cities. So what is the those expenditures paying for? Like most cities, Springfield's, a large portion of Springfield and these other cities' budgets are paying for for staff or full-time equivalents. So Springfield has 446 FTE, and the, this is again FY25 budgeted. The, oh, I don't know what happened to the headings, it's weird. So the the first column is the population, and the second column is total FTE, and then the third column is supposed to say general fund FTE. So the cities are are listed here in the order of the middle column. So Springfield has the third smallest, excuse me, staff of all of these cities, and about half of Springfield's FTE are charged to the general fund, which is pretty similar to other cities that we looked at. We weren't able to get that data point for Albany or Medford. And then this is a chart that shows you where these FTE are are working. So we, with the help of city staff, we just did a scan of budgets, made a, I had to call them for a couple of the kind of central service functions, but put together a table here that just shows you Springfield's workforce and each of these different departments or functional areas. I think that that we talked about the sort of outlier areas earlier, that Springfield is the only city that operates a jail. So you can see there are 19 FTE that 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 work in the jail, and it's the only city that does not operate a parks department. So that's kind of fourth from the bottom there. You can see the size of the other cities' parks departments, and and in most of these cities, parks are a general fund function. Medford and Redmond do not have libraries. Redmond does not have a fire department, but it it does have an airport. And there are some other anomalies, too, that we can talk about when we look at the public safety slides. Any questions about this one?
Why isn't the FTE for Medford listed on the airport? Sorry.
Um, Medford. Oh, yeah, it might be in Public Works. I was kind of pulling from from budget budget books, and they are all organized a little bit differently.
Eugene, too. And some different governments don't detail it out. They'll have a lump sum versus Eugene, you see, was pulled out.
And I think you can kind of see a little bit, too, the the central service functions being a little bit leaner here, at least when you compare Springfield and Corvallis. I'm looking sort of at the finance, human relation, human resources, IT lines. I think Albany is maybe a closer comp than Springfield when you look at those functions, but Corvallis definitely has larger staff in those areas. So what does that mean in terms of population? Springfield has 7.1 FTE per thousand residents. This is makes the second smallest among the sample, ahead only of Medford. And again, about half of that, those 7.1 would be paid for by the general fund in most of these cities. Oops, sorry. Oh, then, they're missing again. So on this table, the population's on the left, the the police is in the middle column, and then fire budget is on the right there. So police and fire and life safety in the city of Springfield together cost $51 million. This is the largest general fund expenditure responsibility, so 32 million out of the 51 does come from the general fund, with the remainder coming out of the the levy funds that that city manager talked about. And I'll note that Albany also has a a local option for public safety levy, but I believe, and Eugene has its community safety payroll tax, but in most of these other cities, these are general fund responsibilities. And that 27 million for Springfield includes but 5 million to operate the jail. So on a per capita basis, Springfield's police expenditures were third largest in the sample, but again, that does include a portion of spending for the jail. So if you remove that orange portion of the chart there, Springfield's police expenditures per capita would actually be the lowest among the sample. And on the right, you can see the per capita fire expenditures put at third among the sample. Redmond, of course, does not have fire services. And the city of Medford does not operate ambulance services, so that might be a part of the reason that their expenditures for fire are a little bit lower.
How are they funded then?
They have a separate district that provides it. They they do have some sort of a good intention ambulance service, but not a full ALS or DLS ambulance service that's operated out of their fire department. Oops, did you have questions, more questions about this one? So we talked a lot about expenditures, and then we we're gonna talk a little bit about how city operations are are funded. So Springfield's taxes per capita are the second highest after the city of Eugene. That's on a total fund basis, so 739 per dollars on a per capita basis in terms of taxes. But its discretionary or general fund or discretionary portion is the second lowest among the sample. So that's the the dark portion at the bottom, and that would be primarily your permanent rate, your property taxes that go to the general fund. And so that was something that we, you know, felt that the task force needed to understand is that, you know, at least half or almost half of the taxes that the city does receive are are dedicated and can't be used for or reallocated for other purposes. And this is a, this, actually, the title, I should have changed that to say revenues per capita. So this is total revenues per capita. The green bar shows you charges, including some of the charges that the previous presenters just talked about. And then the purple, purple portion would be, oh, sorry, the orange portion would be licenses, fees, and permits, so other types of revenues that cities collect for various uses. And the purple would be all other. And this is really just intended to show you that Springfield's revenues that are dedicated to specific uses make up a large portion of the revenues that it collects, taxes being the blue portion. So last, we'll talk a little bit about property taxes. So Springfield levies a police and fire local option tax, as you know, as well as a bond repayment levy, although that's not subject to Measure 5 and 50. We included it in this chart on the left here, just to, because, of course, people pay that tax, and so we wanted to make sure the task force saw the full rate in context. And city, as city of Springfield's rate is the third highest among the sample. That's the the chart on the left there. And then when you look at the city of Springfield's property tax rate in the context of the county property tax rates in other districts, school districts, other government, other special districts, it's still the third, the third highest. But of But of course, that, that does not give you the full picture of how much revenue the city can raise because we, as we talked about earlier, assessed value here in Springfield is a bit lower than, than other cities. And that's partly to do with, or almost entirely to do with the measure five freeze of the property tax base back in the 90s. So, well, the, the next chart is to, this, this slide kind of shows you that property tax rate in the context of the city's budget. So although the city of Springfield's rate is in the higher half of the sample, the city is not able to bring as much revenue to this, as you know, to the budget as other cities. So as an example, here at the bottom, you can see the cities of Corvallis and Eugene. Corvallis has a lower operating rates, that be its permanent rate and its local option rate. And Eugene has a higher rate. Both cities have higher assessed value than the city of Springfield. So they're, the, they're able to, to generate more property tax revenue with their rates. And in the middle here, you can see the impact for a typical residential dwelling in terms of its tax bill. So residents in Springfield do have much lower tax bills than typical residents in these other cities. Although, as we talked about earlier, because incomes are, do tend to be a little bit lower here, it's not necessarily less of a burden, it just means their tax bills are a little bit lower. And so that was kind of the, the thousand-foot view. Lots of data. I, if you have any questions about any of it, I'm happy to take questions. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
You have to want to toss up the next step slide, so people can chant there.
And, and we're happy to go back over the data. But if you're like me, you've sort of seen enough numbers for the night. But we're happy to go back to any of the slides if you want to look at it again, if there's more information. But what you got was a taste of, of what the committee saw. So to, to give them a good grounding in what's possible, what, how we compare to others. So as we think about this, this is sort of what the committee went through in the process. The next part of the work that they did was then to, to look at options, to look at, in all four. And I often talked about them as the buckets, the cost-cutting, the revenue, legislative and economic development. So the committee walked through, we had presentations on any of the possibilities. They added things for revenue, for cost-cutting. To be honest, the city of Springfield is really exceptional on economic development and legislative options and does a lot with a very little. So I'm not going to say that the committee came up with new ideas for legislative things. They more gave priorities for that and talked a bit about what their priorities would be for economic development as well. So we went through a process of looking at all of the options, coming back with ideas, talking through, narrowing down, expanding out till they finally came to consensus. So what we will show you with our next work session with you is the report and the recommendations from the committee. We're hoping to have several of the committee members here to talk to you a bit about the process from their point of view, why they came to where they came to on their recommendations and give you sort of their first person experience with this. And then we'll be here to also answer questions. Are there other questions about the process or how we got to where we are today?
Yes, sorry.
I appreciate this presentation and what you brought, but it, for me, it, I, it didn't say, hey, this is, this is what we're, where we're short. It didn't talk about specifically like what you're looking for in terms of dollar amounts.
Sorry.
And so I'm in like, you're just showing me all these charts and stuff and saying, yeah, you guys are at this low point. But you're not saying, you know, you guys are going to be $2 million short next year, $3 million next year or something like that. So it's like, it didn't really put it in context.
Okay, good, very good question. We'll show a bit of that. The charge to the committee was to remove $4.5 million.
Over a period of time or yearly?
Uh, in total. But it was for over a time horizon of five years. Obviously, we had to get to a $4.5 million number, either in revenues, cost-cutting. The earlier we get the money, the cheaper it is to us. If it's further out, it's much more expensive. So if we were able to make more cost-cutting or raise more revenues earlier on, it could be maybe a bit lower, although the $4.5 million was our, our charge. And that's significant when you look at what your budget is and, and where you have. So it was a significant amount.
Mayor Manning. Um, I just want to provide a little bit of context. That's an excellent question because one of the things that we told the task force as they kicked off was that while they were meeting, we were also developing our budget on a concurrent kind of parallel track. And I gave them the cuts that are pre-existing that will be coming forward to the budget committee in, uh, next month. And so they were aware that there are already some cuts contemplated and what those amounts were. Also, they also knew that although their recommendations would be, you know, were their recommendations, they came to consensus on that. It was, we made it very clear that the council has the ultimate deciding authority over what to do with those recommendations. They could, you know, take all of our recommendations, implement them, they could say some, not, they can tweak them. It's fully up to the council to, to do that. And, and they, they understood that. Also, they understood that all of the product that they were working on in these meetings are, are public records. So one of the things that we will be doing and are in the process of putting together a webpage that will house all of this information, all of the data that you saw this evening, every piece of information that the task force received, including answers to questions that they had for follow-up, as well as the video recordings of the meeting. So if you wanted to do a deep dive, you could and see that process and how it played out. I'll back over to that.
So, and the other thing, Nancy, when that goes out, could you identify for everybody what the, what the two critical meetings were that were, all the deliberations happened, right? Because that's going to be a lot, that would be the ones that I would think you were most interested to, to hear. One of the reasons I asked for this, you know, to start with this data, right, was because A, we, we needed to get, you know, the report still being finalized and we're going to see that on, we're going to see that on the 19th. We'll have the report obviously before then, but that's what the discussion the 19th is. The other one is the, the demographic data or in the, in the city data, I think told us a lot about what we already knew about the community, right? It's a fiscally conservative community. It is a very working class community. And even though we don't spend a lot on government, every one of those dollars that we do spend is felt by people in this community very, very intently. And so to me, I thought it would set the grounding for this next discussion, which is, okay, how do we, as, as the elected officials in this community, adopt the strategy to get us to, to sort of fiscal stability? And this is going to take two or three conversations. But at the end of it, my goal would be that we agree about what the path forward is and give Nancy clear direction to, to go out and implement that. So there, so that's what the conversation is going to come from the 19th through the 30th. Also, I just want to echo a couple of things about the, about the committee. I haven't read the final report because it's not done yet. But the, the results, you know, and the discussion was completely different than what I, what I had expected. And I think that says something about the process, right? Because it ended up at a spot that kind of worked for everybody and developed organically. And the other piece is there, there's been a lot of pre-work, right? Now, now it's up to us to kind of get our heads around what our community recommendations that are going to be, because it's going to require a lot of conversations with different groups in this community about how do we move forward? And with that, if you guys have questions, I know this is a lot of data, which we're good at consuming a lot of data, but about 24 hours later, you're going to have all the questions. Do they have comments they want to jump in or are you guys ready to be done for the evening? Go ahead.
How's the community outreach going to look? There's a piece on that, that some community outreach.
So that is up to us to define. Okay, so to me, that could look at different ways based on how we go, how we go through the report. We can look at the report and say, oh, this is great, go forward and do. The thing I think that's important is we need to get kind of to our initial opinion by the 30th because that way we, we actually have something we can show people and, and respond. And then we, as a, you know, as a, as a council, can look for those opportunities with staff to say, okay, how do we communicate this to the community? You know, it, it might look like when we, when we're out talking about levies, right? Where we're going to rotaries and, and whatnot. But that is up to us to decide how we want to talk about this with the public. So the two things that we're responsible for is to choose a strategy to solve this, to solve this fiscal issue and then talk about how do we want to talk about this with our community? Anything else? All right, I appreciate you hanging in there. I know it's a lot of slides and it's a lot of data, but, but it does, you know, it will help, help us through the end. All right, I'm going to adjourn us for the evening. Thank you so much.